I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We're moving to 102, approval of the closed session agenda. Motion's in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. The motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees, and to receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to view and take action on the disciplinary appeals for individual students as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with division counsel and receive advice on legal matters requiring the advice of counsel and/or pertaining to the actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving student compliance matters as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. And four, to consult with staff and division counsel regarding legal requirements specific to the pandemic which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8 and 8. Five, to receive information and discuss with staff plans for the security of the Kelly Leadership Center and other school board facilities and property and the safety of persons using those facilities and property under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
My second.
Ms. Williams seconds. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
At this time, the Prince William County School Board will enter closed session and return in approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board will now re-enter open session. Closed certification is on for action. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of March 2, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And to two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening this closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Mr. Chairman?
Do you have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to closed session. Action items and motions order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in a closed session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur?
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the approval of the SMA PD recommendation for long-term suspension of student HS22072. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the staff's recommendation for the long-term suspension of student HS22-072 through February 18, 2022, and that the school board also approve SMA PD's recommendation for the student's return to school, any non-traditional education eligibility determination contained in the SMA PD letter, the student's placement at the time of his or her return to school if recommended by SMA PD, and SMA PD's recommendation, if any, regarding eligibility for the computer-based instruction while on long-term suspension.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur?
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
I would now like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Charlotte, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to the approval of the agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur seconds.
Mr. Chairman?
We have a second. Ms. Zargarpur seconded the motion. Now I'll open up for discussion. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
By the way, we have Wade Anderson here this evening who is our new division counsel. It's his first time up here. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item 1302 on the consent agenda came from my office prior to my arrival at PWCS, and I would ask the board to withdraw that item for consideration at this time so that I can have a chance to get up to speed on that. And again, that would be approval of revisions to Policy 102, item 13.02 on the consent agenda.
Is there any opposition to Mr. Anderson's request to remove 1302 from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing that there's no opposition to removing this from the consent agenda, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and remove it. Once she removes it, I will then call the vote for the consent agenda. Any further questions, Ms. Williams?
No questions, just discussion?
On this matter? Something else on the consent agenda? Yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying. Okay, so on this matter, is there any other question now?
Thank you.
Okay, question on the -- while Ms. B is updating the thing, go ahead. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly thank and congratulate for our Food and Nutrition Employees Recognition Week. I don't think, on whole, the public understands how challenging it's been for our food and nutrition services people, dealing with supply shortages, staffing shortages, the fact that a lot of our food is made in-house, not to mention all of the work that they do almost all year long to feed our students and also coordinate with other organizations to ensure our student families are fed over the holidays, over the summer, on the weekends. I look forward to when we are able to bring back our after-school grant programs to feed our middle school and high schoolers after school when they participate in sports activities, but I just don't think that they could be applauded enough for everything that they do to provide our students meals because we know hungry kids don't learn. So I just wanted to say thank you very much and also congratulate Adam Russo for all of his hard work in leading the ship and as well as everything that he does to keep us all informed when it comes to that. And then, very quickly, recognition of National Women's History Month this month and also appreciation of Youth Art Month. The school division participates with many other organizations as well as Hilton Performing Arts Center to display our art from our students. There's always displayed in this building, but they get displayed around the county, and our students participate in several contests. I know Prince William County Water Service Authority is one, and there are several others, but we do have a lot of deserving and talented students in our division that deserve recognition. And often, our arts and our music students don't get the same sort of applause as our athletics, so I just wanted to bring special attention to them. So thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
I wanted to -- I would like to echo the comments from Ms. Williams for the Food and Services because they have done a tremendous job during the pandemic at providing lunches and various meals for students during the summer months, and I wanted to say thank you to Adam Russo and his staff for what they've done. I also wanted to speak in terms of the arts and theater groups that in Prince William County because those are fields that we don't think a great deal about. Last month, we had Black History Month, and this month we have Women's History Month, and I want you to know that Cogan Elementary -- Cogan High School did put on a performance called "The Courageous Four," which outlined the contribution of four African-American women who desegregated Prince William County schools. So those were the items that I wanted to bring to attention of the board. Thank you.
Raise your hand. Ms. Wall?
I just want to draw attention to the Music in Our Schools Month. This month, a lot of our -- well, all of our music programs will be conducting or performing an assessment, which is like an SOL for music programs. So I want to wish all the students and the music directors and across the division good luck, and I hope your performance is pleasing for you and satisfying and that you all are able to do your very best. I love that we have a strong, robust music program in our schools, so I just wanted to lend my support and give encouragement to the students and the teachers as they get ready for that.
B, do you have it up? Okay, can you put the vote up? So the TV screen still says 1302? Oh, it changed, right? So there's a new 1302? Got it. Okay. Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Excellent. So moving on to citizen comment time. The citizens who've signed up in advance to the clerk may address the school board this evening when they're called to the podium. The citizen comment period is for regular school board meetings, limited to one hour. The first half-hour reserve for comments on agenda items only, and the second half-hour comments on agenda items or other topics remain to the operation of the policies of PWCS. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they've identified or they'll be asked to step down. We have four speakers on the agenda items and 10 on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And again, for any speakers who are signed up to speak or seated in the atrium, please proceed to the open entrance of the public meeting room so you'll be directed to the front. I'll start by calling the first five speakers up front. We have -- we'll go with the first four. Mr. William Deutsch will be first, Pedrius Prater, Jeff Fuller, and Stephen Lorenz. And let me remind the audience that please hold any applause regarding the speakers. Please hold any cheering, jeering, or booing with the speakers. We have folks who are watching, hearing, at home, who need to be able to hear it, and we ask proper decorum from all the audience as well. First will be Mr. William Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Speaking to item 1302, which I guess is now under Board Matters. Last time I came to speak about this item, and I pointed out the fact that this board has refused to discuss policy items publicly at the dais and the agenda. And what happened at the rest of the meeting confirmed that statement. You have a policy up for consideration that's going to change how regulations and policies are reviewed, and not a single board member spoke to the merits of that item. It would be a first reading, but at this point, the board is ignoring first reads by not even discussing, not even speaking to. And then, the board decided they're going to just bring it up under consent, which means if the board, until it was finally polled, thank God, but this board initially was going to push through an entire policy without anybody on the board speaking to the merits of it, which tells the public one of two things. Either this board is doing things in secret and planning things out in secret, or these board members aren't actually looking into the details of these policies. Both of those are not good things. When you're changing the policies, and a majority of this board was here when this particular item was amended before, back in 2018, so this should be an item that they're familiar with, but if this board is not going to be digging into the policies that you're discussing, that's a problem. The only comments that were made were from one board member who told me, who spoke back and claimed that I was accusing the board of changing their procedures for how you pass policy. I'm not saying y'all have changed your procedures, you're just not doing the work at this point, or you're operating in secret. Either of those two things really needs to stop. We need public discussion by the board on what's going on here in this county. We just passed a consent agenda where we have $13 million being spent? Can we at least get a breakdown on what's going on? Can the board talk about that publicly? We just passed an audit plan. Can the board talk about this publicly? We just passed a boundary change. Can the board pass -- talk about this publicly? There's no public discussion on this board anymore about the things they're doing. The whole agenda was created with nothing after the consent agenda for this board. It's time to start doing the work and actually digging in to the job. Thank you.
Remember what I asked about the applause. Just for clarification, just for clarification, 1302 was not moved to Board Matters. It was struck from consent agenda, completely off the meeting today. Next is Pedrius Prater.
Good evening, Dr. Latif. Do you mind reading the agenda item that I'm here to speak for?
13.11, increase in fiscal year 2022 operating fund, 378.18111, American Rescue Plan Act ESER funds for homeless children and youth grant award.
Thank you. Pedrius Prater, Niasco District, and my address is on file. Dr. Latif, document date, school board members, entire staff, thank you all for your service to the student, to the teachers who are out there watching, the students as well. We understand that, of course, COVID fatigue is real, and our prayers are with you. The reason I'm bringing up this topic today is because I kind of want to get into the weeds. I think a lot of times, sometimes as parents, we don't really look at what's on the agenda, and this item here intersects with me professionally in two different areas. By day, I work for the U.S. Department of Education, and by night, I work at, well, weekends, I work at the Hildebark Homeless Shelter. And so this item I'm speaking in support of is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for Homeless Children and Youth Grant Award. This is part of a robust plan from the COVID Relief Program. I ask that you guys, as school board members, take an additional look at it and also look at what's happening with the McKinney-Vento Award as well, as well as the community. What people don't realize is that this supports homeless services kids. For example, if a kid is finding himself homeless all of a sudden and they're in a district across the county lines, there's funding that's there to make sure that they maintain some type of semblance of home. There's additional funding that's there to make sure that they have hot meals at night. There's additional funding that's there to make sure they have what type of, any type of educational needs, supportive educational needs. Let me read something, if I will, if I may. It says, "Schools give children and youth experiencing homelessness hope and a chance for a better future. Youth not accompanied by a parent or guardian or lacking fixed, regular, and adequate housing have the same rights. Families should know, you don't need a permanent address to enroll your child in school. Your child cannot be denied school enrollment when school records or other enrollment documentations are not immediately available. Your child may be able to remain in the same school district even if you move," that's when we talked about the transportation. "When in your child's best interest, he or she has the right to request transportation assistance. So at school, ask about these services, basic school supplies, before and after school programs, contact information for community agencies, and helpful resources." I have 12 seconds, 10 seconds. I just want to give a quick pause to what's happening in Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Fuller? Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, board. Thank you, neighbors. Well, you changed the agenda on me, so you kind of threw a wrench in my plan here.
You can still speak towards it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm grateful for that. Very generous. Well, it must be quite a week with the no mask situation. Isn't that quite a new change? I'm grateful for it, and I know some people hung on to that thing like a hobo on a sandwich, but not me. Just on that change, on that policy that you changed, you didn't bother to say who recommended it. It was a school board member. I understand that was changed because of probably an error, but my suggestion is, please give us a name of the school board member that recommends policy changes so we have some accountability and we can go back and ask them what's up. So I'm not going to get into that thing. I do think it's the direction it was going was not good. I don't like the idea of giving even somebody as admirable as our superintendent a blank check. Let me read from the policy because the policy's still in existence. "The Prince William County School Board believes that public awareness of the policymaking process is highly desirable, and that consideration should be given to the views of teachers, parents, and other concerned citizens in the development and implementation of school division policies." Now, think about that. Think about what we've been through since I've been involved with this board in May last year. I'm not surprised that somebody came up with that idea. We had the incident, or the case of the FOIA request that showed that maybe the chairman wasn't that interested in transparency. Okay. You came up with a plan to reduce the time for people to speak to two minutes. That lasted about one hour. You have had for a long time now, until tonight, an outrageous seating policy that was based on nothing that I could discern that made any sense. In fact, out of all the seats that the fire marshal said were available, you only allowed the use of nine percent. Nine percent. You ramped up security. Tonight, I think there's about 10 police officers here and a number of security staff to keep you protected from the moms.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you.
Mr. Stephen Lorenz?
Thank you, sir. Stephen Lorenz from Gainesville District, PhD in physics, president of a small tech company over in Manassas. The quality of the school system directly affects the ability to staff and grow a company in this county, not only the development of the students into a potential tech workforce, but also the ability to attract top talent from across the country and relocate them and their families here to Prince William County. The schools must be funded adequately to attract and retain the best teachers and the best staff. Pay differences between Prince William and other northern Virginia localities has definitely impeded these goals for many years. Funding for schools has been impeded by an overreliance on the residential tax base. Last year, the year before, this year, and next year, taxes are going to increase 70% for the average person. And unfortunately, within a few years, the total tax burden will double again on the residents. So it's very, very important to all the residents of the county that something else be done. More must be done to expand the commercial base, which is the only path to increase funding for the schools. The lowest impact, highest return are additional data center developments that are making their way through the county supervisors at this time. Please support your board of supervisors to expand the commercial tax base. It is vital to the school system that every member of the school board have that discussion with their supervisors. I also ask that any teachers and parents that are at home consider how, five years from now, we're going to be able to afford all of these things, many of which are well-deserving and very good, that the school needs to be doing. We cannot see the residential taxes double yet again. Thank you very much.
Mr. -- so we'll go to the next four. I'll call them up. Mr. Richard Jesse, Mr. Emmett Fletcher, Stephanie Gaffney, Kimberly Stewart. Just, again, clarification, because we did pull it off, consent agenda was 1302. The way it works for the school board is three. School board members can put things on the agenda, the superintendent can put things on agenda, and general counsel. That item came from general counsel originally. And so when you see things in Board Matters, it is usually labeled by the school board members who are supporting it. If it's not labeled, it's either superintendent or general counsel. Moving on, Mr. Jesse?
Good evening. My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. One of the rules that you have is that for you to be able to speak, it's citizen time, you have to wait for the agenda to be posted, or the meeting to be posted. Last week, the meeting was posted momentarily on one day, and I signed up. I know one other person signed up and probably some more people signed up for that momentary thing. Then it went away, and then we got notice that we were signing up early and we were not. So something went wrong with the system. I want to talk a little bit about the situation, and I know you talked about security tonight in closed session according to your agenda. It's interesting to me because it's sort of like a case of, I want to call it discrimination, because you have a situation, if I was a student in one of our schools and I started yelling and screaming and cheering all the time, I would be suspended from school if I didn't shut up. You would probably call the SRO in to pull me out of the class. Why are parents doing the same thing here? And I'm glad that we are beginning to see some enforcement of the rules, but you know, these parents who are yelling and screaming and doing something, at a minimum, you can ban them from the school building, and they can be -- so that's your authority. Or you can charge them with misconduct or something, but you can do something. Okay? So it's just interesting to see that parents--
Please let him finish, folks.
Parents do not, they would not tolerate their kids doing what they are doing in this boardroom. The other thing I'd like to say is that some of our parents and supporters did not want to come to the school board meetings because everybody was unmasked. And I know this is a situation now. I'm still wearing masks. I'm still wearing masks. So at any rate...
Please, no comments from the audience. I'll have to ask you, I'll have to ask people to be removed if we can't keep the meeting in order. Go ahead, Mr. Jesse.
Okay, quickly, I just ask that we allow virtual response like they do, or virtual citizen time like they do at the county board meeting. Thank you.
My name is Emmett Fletcher. I live in the Coles District. My address is on file. Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. McDade. We're here tonight, and Mr. Fuller, I met him last week, he's a gentleman, but I do disagree with some of the things he said. Dr. Latif, you asked for people to be quiet and respectful to each other, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be respectful. We are adults. And Mr. Jesse has some very good talking points. We do need security if people misbehave. Not against the moms, but you got some people out there that like to create things and keep them going. A couple sessions ago at school board meeting, we had people knocking on this door, banging on the walls, and we wouldn't want our kids to do that in school. We certainly wouldn't. I can disagree, and you can disagree, Mr. Fuller and I can disagree, but we're going to respect each other, and that's what we need to do here tonight. I think the school board did an excellent job. They brought in more chairs, I think it's about 40 of them, and also they increased security. We have to learn how to respect each other. That's what it's all about. It's okay to disagree. This is what this country is about. And I would like to commend the board, Dr. McDade, for the job that they're doing. We may not agree with everything they're doing, but they're the best we got right now. If we don't like what they do, we can vote them out. But right now, I think they're doing an excellent job, and I do ask for, to respect our speakers. We don't need to applaud. We know good points when we hear them. And the people on TV, they know the good points. The focus here is our kids. Not to make 15 minutes of fame, or three minutes of fame, it's to help our kids. We have to be the best that we can be. And I want to thank the board, Dr. Latif, and people I disagree with, because they showed up. Last week, we spoke out. We stood up. So I thank you.
Please, folks, we'll move on. Stephanie Gaffney. Then after Stephanie Gaffney will be Kimberly Stewart, Jessica Newton, and Amanda Ballard. Ms. Gaffney.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Gaffney, and I live in Bristow. I typically steer clear of public speaking, but you all claim to have very little opposition from residents, so here I am. I have a lot of opposition here, so this will be choppy to fit time constraints. We volunteer in Prince William County for the schools and their services. My oldest son wears cochlear implants and did not need assistance until the scandemic hit and could no longer read lips to assist him in understanding when people speak. I requested a meeting with the county and was ignored several times. Recently, you have been touting your inclusivity and equity. I guess my son wasn't included in that. So I removed my children from public schools last September, partly because of that, but also because you, Dr. Latif, were texting a school equity council member on May 19th, 2021, that you do not think parents should have a say in schooling. Virginia law disagrees, by the way, and that CRT is already in Prince William County schools. Prince William County just calls it SEL, so the CRT is hidden. Yet, in an interview on August 2nd, 2021, you, Dr. McDade, said that it's graduate-level coursework that we will not be teaching in the pre-K to 12 space. Apparently, you two need to discuss some things. Also, on February 18th of 2022, Dr. Latif, you said in a YouTube video that Prince William County is low transmission, and Dr. McDade emailed that we are in a high transmission and teachers and kids still need to mask on the buses. The withdrawn agenda item 13.02 to give Dr. McDade unchallenged power as an unelected member of Prince William County should never happen. Dr. Latif, on 6/21/21, you said the order is God, teacher, parent, not in my house. My nine-year-old was told by a teacher that he should have fought against me harder to stay in school, and my child had to tell this adult teacher that no, he does not go against his mother. As for the entire school board, I compiled some history for citizen reference. Ms. Williams, on February 15th, 2022, you shared a post that said, "It is a very small percentage of parents, and mostly it is white parents in a position of privilege who are leading that conversation about classroom content. These are the same people hogging the mic." Then you deleted said post. Interesting that you think only white parents care about what their kids are taught, not that is what you meant, right? Ms. Jesse, during school board meetings, you repeatedly pull your mask down to speak into a microphone, as you say, so the people in the back can hear you, but you continue to vote to mask the children and the teachers. How could those kids hear their teachers behind a mask when adults in the back couldn't hear you on a microphone? Also, your husband gets up here every two weeks to speak maskless into a microphone everyone else uses but wants to continue to mask small children. Makes sense to me. On January 12th, 2021, Latif, Rolston, Wal, Zargaper, and Wilk all voted yes to delay in-person for older kids an additional month. Every board member voted yes to revise the citizen participation. And September 15th, 2021, you all voted yes to force vaccination on testing on teachers or they get unpaid leave. February 16th, 2022, Jesse, Rolston, and Williams voted no to remove that vaccination policy. I know there are things bigger than this going on in the world today, but right now we need to focus on the fact that these kids are our future, and what you have forced on them is wrong. Do better, or we will find people who will.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Stewart. My address is on file. I want to start tonight by publicly acknowledging the incredible administrative staff and teachers at Haymarket Elementary for their professionalism over the past several weeks helping all students and families transition to a better and brighter future. We have truly appreciated their implementation and consistency in new updated policies. They have provided families with support, understanding, empathy, and clear communication. Under the leadership of Mr. Scott Baldwin and his staff, our family wants to thank you for making our experience a positive one. Unfortunately, I can't say this for all families and schools, as many parents and students have reported confusion, misunderstanding, misinformation, and false guidance to the updated policies. Without clear direction from county leadership, the new policies were carried out in a variety of different manners, causing chaos, confusion, and uncertainty to families and students. Students were continually put in compromising, difficult, and unfair situations. With lack of communication, leadership clarity, that comes from the top. And why does this happen? Because Dr. McDade and this board fail to be transparent and informative on their policy decisions and implementation, which is why it's no surprise that in the latest recent power grab, this board tried, and Dr. McDade tried, to allow Dr. McDade to remove the 30-day notice to public for all policy changes in the name of efficiency. With efficiency comes decreased efficacy, transparency, and accountability. I am extremely disappointed that this board and Dr. McDade find it appropriate to allow policy shifts and changes without public notification that can happen overnight with no feedback, no input by teachers, staff, students, families, and community that it will directly impact. Finally, it seems like we continue to add to the high-paying job positions in the office of superintendent to make equitable policies during a time when we can't find enough qualified teachers or additional staff, and our teachers face increased classes, class sizes, demands, and lack of resources. If the superintendent's office truly cared about students, every overpaid bureaucrat with a teaching license in this building would be back in a classroom until a qualified teacher can be found. Our students are being placed with long-term subs and teachers without a professional license. It is time that the PWCS leadership in this board lives up to the promises of their office and provide our students with, students of this county, a quality of opportunity and equitable access to education to find their own academic success. We should be focusing less on equity of outcomes and more on the success of every child through rigor, resiliency, and proper supports. It's time to focus on what matters. Get back to traditional educational values, invest our kids through curriculum that care less about gender and race, and more about preparing students for a world-class education to meet the growing demands of a 21st century global economy that requires critical thinkers, communicators, collaborators, and global citizens ready to create positive change, valuable contributions, innovation, new discoveries, and brighter futures for us all. Thank you.
Ms. Jessica, no, no.
Hello. My name is Jessica Newton. I'm a parent to four kids in the Gainesville District. My address is on file. I'm here with my son today because I was denied the opportunity to speak virtually. I had a family emergency. I have a lot to say, and I just, I was told that while we were operating under Governor Northam's coronavirus' state of emergency, which ended June 30th, so, quote, "There is no option for virtual participation," which I find weird, because I've been to many of these meetings, and they are all representing board members that are virtual. Until today, somehow, everyone's here. For a group so hell-bent on equal access, it's beyond me that you can't provide some kind of option, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I like the theme that we have going on, which is about being respectful, and I'm not seeing that in our county today. It's extremely disgraceful that I, again, am standing here before you this evening still fighting for our students and staff of Prince William County. One can only hope that my continued presence and determination will make each and every one of you realize that we, the people, will not relent, and you, the elected officials, will be held accountable for each and every one of your failures. Respectfully, the reality is you have continued to disregard the many issues that your constituents have brought to your attention. I've only brushed the surface on understanding the mental and physical anguish that my children and others have experienced daily. For many months, children have been on the front lines and subjected to constant bullying, ridicule, segregation, and discrimination, and blatant harassment. The many Prince William, many Prince William County children and families have been told they must remain in the back of the classroom, even with an intervention or an ADA plan on file. They've been told they're no longer able to be near their peers while they're inside the school. They've been subjected to cleaning chemicals in the classroom like it's a hazmat situation, resulting in adverse chemical reactions. They're quietly suffering from mental health issues that these COVID mitigation strategies have done nothing but cause more harm than good, mine included. They have academically watched their grades and test scores plummet, and you know what's really disgusting? This treatment has come from some of the very same staff and school board members that we raise our children to love, trust, and respect. And what's more pathetic, signs still remain on all entry doors at schools around the county continuing to confuse our children and staff on their choices. The psychological warfare waged on our children is completely disgusting. Children, students, and staff continue to be intimidated and harassed if they even dare attempt to use their legal right of choice. The inconsistencies are horrific, and as time passes, the irreversible damage continues, and no one's being held accountable. Stop operating under the assumption that every child is the same and resilient. Your message has been heard. We don't fit your narrative. Your continued lack of response, pure disregard for basic human and civil rights, as well as your inability to take responsibility for your actions are a disgrace to this county. Thank you.
Ms. Amanda Ballard, and then after her will be Ma'keia Little, Solonia Miles, Myra Miles, and then Virginia Douglas. So, Ms. Ballard.
My name is Mandy, and I wish I wasn't having to be here tonight, still fighting for my kids, but I'm hoping that by me being here, I don't have to fight so hard later. I thought a lot about what I wanted to say to you guys, by the way that I was treated two weeks ago, and how you silenced me out of your own fear, and also how my children were treated for the last month. If I would have stood up here and I told you that my children had been segregated and discriminated against, if I would have said that they were the only children pulled from their class and forced to sit in the back of the classroom, even my child with an intervention that states that he shouldn't be sitting in the back of the classroom, was forced to comply. If I said they were the only ones that were told that they needed to stand in the back of the line, and that they were told that they were no longer allowed to be near other children. If I said this abrupt change put a toll on my children over the last month and their grades began to suffer, the majority of you on the board would be concerned and want to figure out who should be held accountable. So far, the only name I've been given was Dr. McDade. I'm sure it wouldn't have taken weeks to get someone to even respond to me. I'm sure the board member Lori Williams wouldn't have told me when I spoke to her at the Board of County Supervisors meeting on February 8th that you only dealt with compliance, you only dealt, that you don't deal with operation, just policy, and you don't help a civil rights violation, and the best you could do was send an email and that you were helping me by listening. You wouldn't have made that Facebook post that it was a percentage of white parents who are hogging the mic. You probably wouldn't have been seen at the last school board meeting telling Dr. Latif to stop me. I'm pretty sure Superintendent McDade wouldn't have been texting while I was getting cut off and squirming in our seat. I'm sure she would have tried to resolve my concern, and it wouldn't have taken three weeks for her to even respond to address it. I'm sure she would have been able to reference me to a policy and setting changing course and saying it's a practice, especially after all, this is about equity, right? It isn't about equity for all. I understand my situation has nothing to do with the color of my skin and everything to do with politics. I don't fit your narrative, and you don't care about my children. I realize I'm not alone in this. Many students, parents, and teachers have been discriminated, bullied, and harassed, and had their rights violated. Like I said before, the last school board meeting, I'm not done. I'm not done fighting and advocating for my children. So I'm here tonight to not only, to speak on not only my behalf, but on behalf of hundreds of other mothers, fathers, and families. Your pattern of limiting the number of speakers and rejecting those who oppose your views does not give everyone a voice. So tonight, I represent those families as well to speak. We publicly give you the School Board of Prince William County and Superintendent Dr. McDade notice of our intent to submit affidavits and submit claims against your insurance policy number P-2021-2022-VRSAP-064603, Virginia Risk Sharing Association, for your repeated failure to faithfully perform the duties as prescribed by the Constitution and bylaws or resolution of your governing body. We will not be silent, and we will not cease until there's been accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Who do you want me to give these to?
You can just leave it right, give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
We'll take Ms. Ma'keia Little next. Ma'keia Little.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. McDade, Chairman Latif, and members of the Prince William County School Board. Last week, immediately after I spoke, an eighth grader facetiously and disrespectfully questioned the motives of the school board's efforts to protect students like mine, educators like my sister, and staff members like members of this community that I've grown to love and care for, and was cheered on by adults for doing so. Due to the current rules and setup for citizens' comments, I wasn't even able to hear her disrespectful comments until days later when the recording of the meeting was made public, which is its own separate issue that I will refrain from addressing this evening. When I initially engaged the northern administration regarding the lack of African and African-American history in our public schools and curriculum, I concluded with what I felt was a good overarching question and mutually agreeable north star. What kind of citizens are we trying to create? As a certified diversity, equity, and inclusion practitioner who worked constantly to remediate racist, non-inclusive behaviors and workplace policies on the back end, I realized that through our curriculums and education systems, we were actually feeding it to our children on the front end. And this discovery seems to have awakened a sleeping dragon who was absolutely content with the system operating as intended until it was called out. And now that dragon has responded with anti-CRT, anti-mask, anti-vax, anti-books, anti-everything that seeks to create citizens who can critically examine that structures of our government and policies that maintain inequitable outcomes for the haves and the have-nots. The only question I have for the fellow co-parents this week is this, one of which who just said we need to care less about gender and race. If my son had registered to speak and spoke to the members of this board with the same level of disrespect and facetiousness as one of your daughters did last week, would you have cheered him on? Or would you have had a completely different set of adjectives to describe him and his behavior? I think we all know the answer to that question. So just to take it back to kindergarten and lessons on civility, citizenship, manners, and respect again, I'll pose this overarching question for the good of the order. What kind of citizens are we, Prince William County Public Schools, and that includes students and parents, trying to create? Thank you.
I will have folks removed. Okay, guys? This is, if you want to cheer, there's a lot of sporting events. We have some great basketball teams heading to championships and stuff, so let's refrain from that, please. We'll go on next to Solonia Miles. Myra Miles. And then Virginia Douglas. Okay. That wraps up citizen comment time. We'll move on next to our student representative. Student representative tonight is Shar- Student representative tonight is Charlotte Flynn from Woodbridge High School. She's a senior that joins us this evening. Ms. Charlotte Flynn, please, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members in Prince William County. Tonight, I want to speak on several upcoming agenda items. The month of March is very important for our county because of representations such as Music and Theater in Our Schools Month and National Women's History Month. These themes hold special meaning and celebrate a diverse range of people in Prince William, and it is important that we recognize that. The importance of Women's History Month is to celebrate and honor the vital role of women throughout history, the major struggles they have endured, and the accomplishments that they have earned. Women have fought for their right to vote, to participate and represent within government, and to have their voices heard in the workplace. March is the month to recognize this history, to reflect and learn from the past, and look forward to the future with an enlightened mind. I encourage all schools and citizens to contribute to this month and its cause, and remember its importance. Other important themes for this upcoming month are music and theater in our schools. It is important to appreciate the fine arts and the gifts that students can share within the classroom to help expand their learning. Recognizing this, March is the month to understand the significance of music, performance, and art within schools and within the lives of Prince William students. I want to take the time to share with you what my school, Woodbridge, and other schools are doing to celebrate and honor the arts. Woodbridge recently hosted District Choir, an honor choir event where students across the county had the chance to work with a select group and refine their skills with a guest conductor. The choir also performed at the Thomas Dale Regional Competition, where the a cappella groups placed first and third in their division. School choirs, orchestras, and bands across the county are currently working for assessment, where they will be tested on technique and musicianship. The Patriot Orchestra hosted their pre-assessment concert at 7:00 today, preparing for their actual assessment on Friday and Saturday, March 11th and 12th. Band assessment will take place March 5th for Patriot, and on March 7th, the Patriot Singers will collaborate with Gainesville Community Choir at their Prelude to Peace Concert. All county events will also be taking place. The All County Band will be March 22nd, All County Orchestra, March 29th, and All County Choir will be April 5th. These events will be hosted in different high schools across the county. Woodbridge Theater is also working on their spring musical, Little Shop of Horrors. This gives students a chance to participate in a full ensemble and showcase their talent. And Patriot will also host their musical, Mama Mia, on March 31st through April 2nd, displaying their student talent and recognizing music and theater for the month of March. I hope to see other performances and events that showcase Prince William talent and recognize the importance of the arts. Thank you for letting me speak today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte Flynn. Excellent. Next, we'll go to superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Good evening. I want to begin by providing additional details on three consent agenda items related to grants and how those will impact our current fiscal year budget. PWCS had the opportunity to apply for three grant programs related to American Rescue Plan Act, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESR funds. We are happy to announce that we were awarded all three grants. This grant funding will address unfinished learning, before and after-school programs, summer programs, bus driver recruitment and retention, and the McKinney-Vento Program, which supports homeless children and youth. It is a requirement, it is a requirement of the grant that PWCS incur these costs and then be reimbursed by the federal government. To cover these costs upfront, we will be seeking approval from our Board of County Supervisors to increase our current operating fund budget by approximately $13 million, which is the grant award. And it is important to note that these grant funds have no impact on our proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. March is a busy month with many recognitions and observances planned. Today is Read Across America Day, and I know our schools engaged in many fun activities to encourage a love of reading. The National Association of School Social Workers has designated March as Social Work Month, and March 6th through 12th is National School Social Work Week. Our school social workers play a critical role in fulfilling our commitment of a positive climate and culture outlined in the PWCS Vision 2025 Launching Thriving Futures Strategic Plan. I appreciate the efforts of our social workers to help students explore their abilities, strengths, and interests and talents while helping school personnel identify key resources for our students and their families. March 6th through 12th is also National Foreign Language Week, which recognizes the importance of learning the languages of others and encourages all stakeholders to recognize the richness of language and cultural diversity. Our strategic plan sets the goal for the diversity of students enrolled in all world language classes in middle and high school to mirror the division demographics within all student groups. We are expanding world language opportunities to reach this goal. March is also National Women's History Month. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our country and world in countless ways. I look forward to seeing the many ways our schools will celebrate the accomplishments of women throughout history. Before closing, I would like to express our support for our families with ties to Ukraine and those who may have family members serving within the region. Our thoughts and prayers are with our PWCS families who may be impacted during this challenging time, and we hope and pray for peace to come soon. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the regular superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. I'm going to move on to 1703 Board Matters. This evening, I'll go first because I have to leave early for another meeting. Anyways, go ahead and start the clock for me, Jim. What a great week it's been, a couple of weeks, you know, students. I see postings all over social media about our students getting into the colleges of their dreams, of their choices, and students hearing about their admissions. We're hearing about our student athletes getting scholarships and getting named all county teams and all division teams, and so I congratulate all those, and there's way too many to sort of point out. We've had some terrific championship games last weekend in basketball, and congratulations to all those who made it to those games and the teams that won. Again, very strong effort by everyone. Our students are continuing to do great work and re-engaging and getting back to work. I'm very excited to see that, you know, the masks are off and the students are, you know, have a choice in that matter. I think that's fantastic. I think as we move on and put this pandemic behind us, the biggest work we have to do is make sure our students get the academic support and mental health support that they need to continue to succeed. So I continue to support all parts of our school division, all the programs that our principals and teachers are doing to support our students, and I look forward to our budget markup, which is next Wednesday, that really addresses a lot of our strategic plan that goes to the heart of the work we have to do here, and that's for our students. And I thank you all for that, and at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Adele Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wilk, is it okay if we start with you this time?
Yes, I'll try to go through this quickly. Okay, so it's been a busy two weeks. I want to recognize everything. On 2/18, Ashland Robotics hosted a parent night that I attended. I want to thank Mr. Delaney, Mr. Avislarla, and Mrs. Duranisik for leading the team and inviting me. On 2/19, I watched the Potomac Varsity Boys Basketball Game claim another regional title during their win over Woodbridge. During this game, I made the appearance as the Panther mascot, and I challenge all my colleagues to dress one game as your mascot to see how lovely the breathing is there. On 2/22, I visited the following schools: Independent School, Graham Park, Williams Elementary, Montclair Elementary, and Potomac Shores Middle School. On 2/23, I attended the Henderson PTCO meeting virtually to answer parent questions. On 2/24, the SCA at the Forest Park High School hosted a student town hall for me, where I spoke directly with students at Forest Park about concerns that they were facing and the impact of COVID-19 and virtual learning. I do want to thank both Ms. Gonzalez's for organizing the event, organizing the event. On 2/25, I attended the Potomac Shores Middle School Basketball Game, where they demolished Lakridge Middle School to remain undefeated in the region. On 2/26, I attended the countywide chess tournament hosted at Forest Park High School with my colleague Lisa Zagapor to present the trophies to the winners. Following that, I high-tailed it over to my other high school, Potomac, who was hosting the regional color guard competition, which Ms. Jackson attended with me to support the group. On 2/28, Mrs. Kerbal at Patty Elementary invited me in during the day to speak to her second graders about leadership. I went across the street and also visited the Washington Reed Early Childhood Center as well. On that day, I went to Potomac Middle School to watch their basketball game, and a teacher did not show up for their duty, so I had the fun privilege of running the game clock for the first time, I think, in 30 years. So that's an extremely stressful thing, but that was fun, a close loss there. Finally, last night, the Forest Park hosted the District Pyramid Concert. This is a great celebration of the arts in the Potomac District, which included the following schools: Potomac Shores Middle School, Montclair Elementary, Henderson Elementary, and Forest Park High School. I want to recognize Director Laura Britton for putting on this great event. Finally, a couple of community recognition. When it comes to outstanding athletes, Kyle Honore for the Potomac Basketball Team was the All Region Player of the Year, the Cardinal District Player of the Year, and he also made the prestigious 1,000-point club at Potomac High School. Lastly, sorry, Ms. Jackson, I do want to recognize also another outstanding athlete, Peter DeJean, who won states, this is states, champion state 55-meter hurdles for Potomac High School and will be heading to Nationals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Zagapor?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I want to first acknowledge that Colgan High School is trying out a new traffic pattern this past week, continuing to receive feedback from different constituencies. So some are the students and parents who are trying to get in and out of the school, some are people who are just sitting in the traffic. I understand that the right-hand turn coming from the Kelly Center toward Colgan, the right-hand turn into Colgan, is a little bit better, but that whole Hoadley 234 thing is still a mess. I did speak to administrator at the school today. They are looking at a couple other options, so just everyone have, you know, take a breath, have some patience. We're going to get through this. Got the pleasure this week, over the couple of weeks, watching the Osborn Park Girls' basketball game, basketball team winning their games. They won the regional championship against Woodbridge High School. They will be playing Friday. I will see you all there. Once a jacket, always a jacket. Got to go with my colleague, Mr. Wilk, over to the chess tournament. It was really amazing to watch all these kids just sit there and play these games so quickly. He and I challenged each other to a fake game. It was awesome. Osborn Park High School placed first as a team, and Parkside Middle placed second, so congratulations there. I also attended the Parents as Partners event over at Colgan High School. It was a countywide event, and it was absolutely amazing. If you have any children with a 504 and IEP, they were, they had these amazing binders that were organized. The staff there was wonderful. There were many vendors you could talk to about the different services that are available in the county, and the keynote speaker was amazing. Everybody kept saying things like they felt seen by her. Her words meant so much because she was just able to really get to the heart of what it's like to have to work with your child or your family member and wear a hat as a parent, as a caregiver, that sort of thing. Music in our school month. I am a music teacher. I want to make sure we recognize our elementary music teachers because that is where it all begins. That love of learning and doing music together begins in those kindergarten classrooms. So thank you, elementary music teachers, for everything you do, and of course, the middle school teachers giving our children an experience with band chorus or strings, and hopefully our kids hold on to these moments and move on through high school. Yes, we have assessment this weekend. I will drop in and hear some of the performances. I look forward to it. It's going to bring back some memories for me personally because those were some of my favorite memories. And I want to end tonight with just a little bit of a recognition of life is not always easy for some people, and our Hilton High School community had a loss recently. So I'd like to just end with a moment of silence in honoring some of our people in our community who struggle. I love you, Hilton.
Thank you, Ms. Zagapor. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I want to start out by talking a little bit about the Read Across America Day and the love of reading. Just want to put a plug into all parents listening about the importance of reading with your children, spending time every day, if possible, reading with children, reading to children, and listening to them read. And not just that, but developing the relationship of encouragement and inquisitiveness and understanding what is being read. And those, that education, I mean, we can do a lot here in our schools, and we do a tremendous amount, but it really does start in the home, so appreciate the partnership with parents. I am excited and looking forward to graduation. I know it's only March, but parents and teachers know that March, April, May just flies. And so it is that time of year, I encourage everybody to lean in, teachers, students, everybody, lean in, do that hard work, get the, get into the material and master it, and, you know, reach those goals that you set in the beginning of the year. Now is the time. Also, Battlefield, I want to make a pitch for saving the date. March 15th, 2022, at Battlefield High School, there is a group called Alex's Army, and their hashtag is #PushUpsForChildhoodCancer. Alex was a child who had cancer. He passed away some years back, but he would have been a senior this year at Battlefield. And there isn't going to be another attempt. They've tried in the past, but the attempt will be to break the Guinness World Record for the most people doing push-ups at a single time for one minute. So that's going to be, in order to do that, it has to be 2,000 people, and the date is May 15th, 2022, and all are welcome. So I just want to put a special plug in for that. Alex's Army is an organization that raises awareness and funding for childhood cancer research, and I think that's appropriate because we just recently had Rare Disease Day. So much has changed in such a short amount of time. We have, you know, maybe some vertigo with all of the COVID policies and restrictions and lifting of everything, masks and everything else. And I know there's, I just add one more plea for patience as we move forward, remember kindness, consideration, grace, as we interact with each other in a mask optional phase. It seems like for most reports, I think we're doing pretty well, but it never hurts to get a reminder that we need to be considerate of one another and respectful of one another's choices because we truly are in a choice, a personal choice and personal responsibility phase of the pandemic. And lastly, my thoughts are also with any students, well, all students who are concerned about what is happening in Ukraine, whether the students have ties to Ukraine or not. This is a stressful time for students, so I would just say, you know, talk with your kids, listen to them, ask them if they're concerned, and listen to what they have to say, and help assure them that you are doing everything you can to keep them safe. And I leave my comments with, on that note, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I want to start my comments out this evening by thanking Freedom High School for inviting me to participate in their, or to attend, excuse me, their first-ever Black History Month celebration. It was entitled "The Color of Joy." It was an outstanding program that looked at music, dance, art, and fashion, and how Black culture has impacted our culture at large and our society at large. I want to especially give thanks to Mr. J.B. Akbar for inviting me, but also to the social studies teacher, who is also the teacher of African-American Studies, Ms. Deanna Forbes, for putting this program together. It was an astounding and informative program. One of the highlights to the program that I thought was outstanding was the time that was taken to give student entrepreneurs opportunity to highlight the products that they have. I don't think we spend enough time recognizing the great accomplishments of our students or recognizing that today's world has developed different types of students, and they are in schools right now building their future and doing it, as I heard and learned through Instagram, and that was just amazing. I also had the opportunity to read to Kilby High School. Thank you to the social work over there, Ms. Vicky Castro. I went to Ms. Morrison's class and was greeted by two wonderful second-grade children, and I promised them that I would put their thank you note in my office, to which I did, and I'm very thankful for that opportunity. On Monday, the 28th, I attended a community meeting at Fred Lynn for the new elementary school that will be developed over in that area. I also want to go back to Freedom really quickly. There's- There's an employee at Freedom by the name of Nikki Frius, who just was awarded Ovation Award. She is an author, and she also hosts the Writing Club for Freedom students, and I hear it is very popular, and I just wanted to send her a special congratulations. Next, up for our next meeting, Ms. Simpson, and we could add the GovSchool meeting, so we have an update for that. I also want to go back to what I've been doing for past several years, and that is asking our Prince William County Board of Supervisors to put a bus stop out here, so we really can have equity for anyone who wants to attend a public meeting, because right now, if you don't have a car and you don't have anyone to get here by another person, you don't come to these meetings. So I think that that would be nice, since there is an influx. And then lastly, I normally don't do this, but I just want to be perfectly clear, when I sit up here on the dais and I make a vote, I stand by my vote. I will not be intimidated by my choices, and I'm always 100% sure when I stand firm in my decision. And if that's not the case, then I publicly say so, and that is on record. And also, if someone does choose to quote me or to come up here and speak against me, I have no problem with that, but I would ask you if you do it correctly. And I do want it noted for the public record that I did refer Ms. Ballard to the Human Rights Commission for any civil human rights violations, because Prince William County actually has a Human Rights Commission. We are very blessed to have that and very fortunate. It's not throughout the state of Virginia, and that is the appropriate course of action if you have human rights issues, in case anyone in the public wants to know. And then lastly, I'm sorry for going over time, but I do think it's important that the public understand that my posting was not taken down. I actually privatized my personal Facebook page after being harassed and attacked on it, because people don't understand my personal page is separate from my public page. And I also want to make it very clear that if I do post something, that I would appreciate it, if people are going to comment on it, that you read the entire post and its quote and understand that it came from the article and not from me, because I think that's important. When we get up here and speak, it's good to project the accurate representation of what happened, because that's important, whether you agree or you disagree with someone. That's how you have civil discourse, and it's our job to model good behavior for the next generation, so that they can continue to have discourse, so that we can learn and educate from each other. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank all the members of this board, every member of this board who decided to run for the school board, because this is an opportunity for us to share our desire and advocacy for the community. I want to thank Margaret Franklin. I'm sorry, I'm distracted by them. Thank you. I want to thank Margaret Franklin for organizing a Black History program. Dr. McDade was a part of that, and we recognize Fannie Fitzgerald, who was one of the African-Americans who desegregated public schools, Jenny Dean, who was the original Black school in Prince William County, and also George Hampton, whose name is on Godwin. And that school, until we named that school for George Hampton, we did not know that Mr. Godwin was a part of the Mass of Resistance. And for those people who do not know what the Mass of Resistance happened to be, was that after Brown versus the Board of Education, schools in Prince Edwards County were closed for five years, and students were not allowed to attend school. So those are just my announcements. When I was a principal, every Friday, every Friday, we did this cup, we recognized people, I tried to recognize people behind the scene, and I gave these little Demetast cups to everyone. And I've tried to carry that tradition on, but when I left that school as a principal, many of those teachers gave a cup to me. And tonight, I brought a special cup, and I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to hold this cup up for me. And every school in my district has what's called a cup of gratitude, and this cup of gratitude tonight is for all of the teachers, teacher assistants, substitutes, front-office workers, nurses, bus drivers, custodian, cafeteria workers, and volunteers in school, and for all those at central offices, superintendent and her staff. And just in case I missed anyone, I'm going to say, I want to thank everybody. Now, down south, we say "everybody," so some people know what that means, but I want to thank everybody who has endured this very challenging time. It's been two years of challenging times for all of us on this board. And I would like to hope that this reduction in positivity level lasts, because I am a speech therapist, and working with a child with a mask is almost impossible. I want you to know that I'm not anti-mask, but I am concerned about students who are exposed to certain conditions. I commend the superintendent for supporting safety measures for our staff and students when it was not always popular to do so. There was a high level of positivity when we were implementing the CDC guidelines. I hope that this continues, because it makes it easier for students in our schools and our teachers to work with our kids, and our number-one responsibility is our kids. I called every school in my county, in my district, and all of those schools told me that their teachers and their students were doing well, and that they were responding to the mask reduction, reduction of masks in a positive way. Thank you for the photographs, by the way. I hope the level of positivity continues. But tonight, the blue and gold cup and my blue and gold dress. I would like for us, I wear the colors of Ukraine, and my cup represents those colors for those of you who come to this boardroom and share your concerns in this open forum. We live in a country that allows us to speak without repercussions. I ask that when you come into this boardroom, that you be reminded that there are children who would love to have, the only problem being whether or not their children can wear a mask. As of today, I'm told by the news that 100 kids have been killed in Ukraine. And so for me, I would like to say that all of us take this moment, just a moment of silence, to recognize not just the adults in Ukraine, but for the children of Ukraine. So I ask for a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. This week, I had the privilege to watch the Brentsville Girls' Basketball Team play against the Mustangs in Falls Church for the regional championship. My family and I enjoyed attending and watching the Tigers play a very good game. Good luck to them on Friday in the state championship. Congratulations to Patriot Boys, they win class swim title state, and Patriot Boys Basketball, who also had a wonderful season, undefeated with a 26-0 record. Good luck to them on Friday in the boys' basketball state championships. Congrats to Coach Shoman, Region 6B Coach of the Year. There are a number of great things going on in the Brentsville District. Please keep me apprised, I don't want to miss the chance to celebrate. I was fortunate, as Mr. Wilk mentioned, to attend the regional color guard competition at Potomac High School and watch Woodbridge combine winter guard with some Unity Reed students with Mr. Wilk. They did a great job, and I was so impressed. Rare Disease Day was February 28th. The purpose of this day is to raise awareness for the 300 million worldwide that are impacted by rare diseases. That's around 1 in 20 people who are impacted by rare diseases, sometimes impacting their whole life. It's important to raise awareness, because with knowledge comes additional funding, research, and acceptance. That in mind, I yield my time with a gentle reminder to be kind, and my thoughts and prayers continue to go out regarding the conflict in Ukraine, and always to those who serve our country and their families. Thank you. And there being nothing further to come before this board, I now declare this meeting adjourned.